We call the October 10, 2018 work session to order. We'll let the ministry reflect that all of the board members are present. We have a number of members of staff and we've got a very, very interesting and exciting-looking audience tonight, so we look forward to hearing from a number of them this evening as we move forward. The monthly reports for September are all in, for the most part. I think all of them were coming in this afternoon, so thank you to all of our department heads for that. We have no public hearings this evening. We do have one guest. This is to discuss -- excuse me. I raced ahead of that. I apologize. Thank you. We do have the September 26, 2018 minutes before us and would entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
I'll move.
We moved and seconded any discussion on those minutes?
No, I was away, but I read the minutes and I watched the program.
Okay. Thank you. Then seeing no further discussion, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Lisa, thank you as always for the minutes. We will now get into our guests. We have a discussion on new ownership for the Penfield Gold and Coin at 1833 Penfield Road. And Mr. Costello, I'd ask you to further tee that up. I'd ask the applicants to please join us. Welcome.
Thank you, Tony. This is Mr. and Mrs. Robert Tokar. Robert Tokaris, Cindy, this is my wife. They came to see me last week. They are interested in opening up or continuing the operation of the Golden Coin Shop down at 1833. The prior operator has relocated out to the Village of Webster and they would like to take the business over and run it. I indicated to them that I think that it would be important for you to meet them first before we move forward with any type of application. They were more than willing to come in.
Great.
And I thought it would be a good idea for Bob and Cindy to give you a little background as to who they are, what they do, and their interest in this site and what their intent is for the site if they are allowed to operate at that location.
Okay. Very good. And welcome. We do have the information that you did provide, so thank you very much for that. But would love to hear in a little bit more detail what you've got planned, what you'd like to see at that particular location.
Well, we were interested because the business is already established, so we had been customers of the previous owner for quite a while and when the opportunity arose, we heard he was moving. We kind of asked, "What's going to go on?" He goes, "Do you want to buy this?" And I go, "Well, we'd definitely be interested." And that's when we started to make contact with Mr. Costello. It wasn't that long ago. And what we plan on doing, we've been in the business of going to flea markets and setting up at shows for a long time, probably close to 25 years. And we've had the opportunity a couple times to have a shop, but it was in the city of Rochester and I didn't feel as though my wife would be safe there if I had to leave her alone. And when we heard Penfield, we kind of got excited about it. And my background is with security, vast security, Department of Defense security. I have many friends who are current and former law enforcement officers. And also, I have a secret clearance for the government. So as far as anything to do with buying or stolen property or anything coming in the door, I'm going to be harsh on that. I also have private numbers of several law enforcement officers, not just calling 911. I have their cell phones. And I'm definitely a stickler for that and I know that the issue of parking arose and I looked into it and there's hardly more than one or two people in the store at a time, so I don't think it's going to be an issue for parking either.
Can you talk a little bit about how you operate the business, the hours of operation, number of employees in the site? Would you like to sell from the site?
Well, we're not going to have any employees because we're both going to be interested.
I'm an employee.
I don't know if I'm her employer, she's my employee.
No.
I can answer that question.
I'll handle the cash.
Yeah, I just hand her the cash. I hold it for her. But yeah, to start out with, definitely just going to be the two of us. We may have to make a deal where we get a little training from one of the persons that used to be in that store. He said he would be willing to show us some of the operations on gem buying because we don't really know the ins and outs of the gems yet.
Or gold and silver.
Gold, I know some of the gold pretty good. But we want to just, basically, I want to retire. I don't want to do the security business anymore.
It's a good opportunity for--
I don't want to be in the city with a shop because I'm worried about her safety.
Yeah.
And Penfield is a beautiful town for that.
Where do you live?
I live in the Maplewood section of the city.
Yeah, your Kodak Park?
Yeah. Where they tore down the old Peeler Pontiac, I don't know if you're -- They're going to build a police station in that spot.
Yay.
So your hours of operation would be at a--
Ten to five, yeah.
The normal hours are going to be 10 to 5, but until I change over, you know, change, leave my job, I might have to cut it short like 10 to 3 to start out with. But 10 to 5 is probably going to be the normal full-time hours.
Five days, six days, seven days.
Saturday would be like 10 to 2.
And what are you going to sell? We'll sell like costume jewelry, Victorian-type jewelry.
Some sterling.
Yeah. Anything that we may acquire from like buying and selling in states because we go to state sales and whatnot, that we could buy low and sell high, so to speak.
As long as you make a profit.
Yeah.
But another thing is we might get into a few small antiques like clocks and stuff like that, whereas that wasn't the case before.
Are you proposing a name change?
No, we want to keep everything basically the same. We're buying the fixtures and the signs, keep all the signs the same.
Turnkey.
Not add anything as far as signage. And basically, he's established that business and we were interested because he did fairly well there. He'd probably do a lot better in Webster, but I don't know, maybe not.
So you indicate that you're not interested in ponds, so you'll not be--
No, no ponds, no loans or ponds or anything like that.
Okay. So if someone had a clock, for instance, and walked in and said, "I'd like to sell this clock," if you came to an agreement on the price, you would buy it and then you'd look to then have that in the store to sell?
Right.
And if I came back to buy that clock, I could do that if I wanted to, but it probably would cost me more than what you gave me for it?
Yeah, it probably would. I mean, unless it was a special situation where like somebody made a mistake.
Yep.
You know, I would say like, "Oh, that was my grandmother, she wanted it or something. I wasn't supposed to sell that." You work with the people.
Sure.
Plus, you've got to hold it too.
Yeah, it wouldn't be for sale for 14 days anyways.
Okay, by law.
By law.
By law. And then you indicate no electronics of any kind?
No electronics.
And no tools?
No.
And so when I think of tools, I think of, you know, anything from hand tools to electronics and everything in between, so would just no tools, essentially no tools in general?
Absolutely none, no.
Okay.
No. Only collectibles and stuff to do with like jewelry.
So why would you want to keep the name Penfield Golden Coin?
Because it's in the middle of Penfield.
Well, Golden Coin would not lead me to your business from how you're describing it.
Well, the website is set up like that and we don't want to start a new website. We want to adopt the website that's already there.
And they have, I guess, a good following.
Yeah.
I don't know if you're aware of the history of that shop, but based on the history of that shop, I'd be much more comfortable if you weren't taking it over, if you were starting fresh.
But changing the name?
A whole new business.
Yeah.
And so would a lot of Penfield, I think, as well.
Well, would the name Penfield still be in the title? Would that be a good idea?
Absolutely. I think that--
I mean, I think we certainly want businesses to succeed and so, you know, we won't certainly lead you down a path where you're a business that is, you know, either not welcomed by Penfield or not utilized by Penfield. And I think the idea of jewelry and antiques certainly is more palatable than gold, coin, pawning, but I would suggest a different name.
Okay.
A different, more of an upscale kind of look than is currently there, frankly.
Okay.
Yeah, antiques, sure.
Penfield Collectibles and Antiques or what, something of the sort. Yeah, there's no problem.
I've heard concerns and I share the concern about, you know, the signs in the window and kind of the flashy neon.
I don't think it even flashes though.
Urban, well, urban-looking neon, you know.
Yeah, no, we don't want to cheapen it.
Where I think that if you look around the four corners and kind of what some of the other businesses are doing in terms of upgrading, I think you'd want to incorporate as best as you could in there. And that's where I think duplicating a lot of what's been done there might be shortchanging yourself and your business into how you can be successful in this area.
Well, I know a lot of the business is based on buying precious metals, so I'm not sure exactly what the totals are yet. We've flashed some numbers at me, but they were pretty impressive as far as gold. So what I want to do is I want to make sure that keeps flowing in because that pays the rent. And somehow, if I can adopt a name that still tells people to bring their gold there, then that would work perfectly. I wouldn't, you know--
Penfield Golden Antiques, I don't know, something like that.
Yeah, something like that.
I really would--
That would be--
I'd just say it'll change.
But I would also, you know, we've got the experience with the business and with that business district and it's a special district for everybody.
Yeah, it's historic.
I think you can really, with a little bit of time tuning and starting fresh on a lot of things.
Yeah, I would agree to that, yeah.
Be a little bit more upscale, a little bit, you know, a little more inviting for more people.
I think that's Penfield Gold sounds good, and collectibles, yeah.
And antiques.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, antiques, it's a very historical area and there's a lot of antiques in this town.
Just in terms of signage and maybe, you know, making it maybe a little less, I guess, urban-looking, less neon.
Right, right. Because you see them on every corner in the city. I understand.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah. You know, that's just kind of what jumps out at me right now.
Okay.
Be taken over the same space identified as about 825 square feet?
Yeah. I'm surprised it's that much. I always thought it was more like 650 or 700. This is pretty small.
Okay.
But maybe it's the way they had it laid out.
Sure, sure.
I wasn't thinking about the back, you know, behind that wall once there.
Okay, all right. All right, I think one of the things that they're asking for is that would the board consider this application to go to a public hearing?
That's right.
And so, Board, I think based on what we've heard, is the Board willing to have this as a public hearing before us?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right. Okay, so it looks like, just a couple of things. What I would suggest is that there was a resolution that was dated September 7, 2011. I would encourage you to get a copy of that from Mr. Costello. That was the original application that came in for this property back then. And then it subsequently had a new owner and now you are the third owner, if you will, or prospective owner, if you will. So I would just encourage you to take a look at that. Based on conversation with the Board, talked a little bit about possible name change and that's something that you should take some time.
Sure.
And just kind of noodle through that, what you think makes the most in the best sense. You've got a good start on the paperwork that we would need for a public hearing, so Jim can help you get the rest of that taken care of and we'd look to get you in as soon as the next available time with advertising and things like that. So I would entertain a motion from this Board to move forward with a public hearing?
I'll move that we move forward with a public hearing.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, thank you, Linda. Been moved and seconded. I'll just ask Mr. Costello, anything additional that we haven't discussed this evening that you believe should be added to the record?
No, I think it falls into what Paul was saying though with respect to the signage and how the signage looks. And I'll work with them to come up with a sign package for you.
Yeah, the word vintage popped into my head too.
Oh, yeah. I use that because I do eBay also and I use that a lot in my listings, vintage, vintage.
And that kind of resonates with young people and--
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
All right, no, that's funny. Any other questions or comments by the Board?
No.
Anything from the applicants that either questions or anything that you'd like to add to the record this evening?
I can't think of anything to do.
Okay. What I would encourage, excuse me, what I would encourage is, you know, spending some time with Jim. You have, it sounds like you've already done that. He'll help you through this next phase of the process. We'll get you in for a public hearing before the Board. You'll come in and it'll be a little bit more formal upfront and give folks in the town, anyone that wants to speak for or against the application, have that opportunity to do so.
Okay.
All right? Great. Thank you for your time. Good luck with putting everything together.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, folks, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to our action items. And first action item is a follow-up of a public hearing that we held last week. This is for a 4,292 square foot animal hospital at 1467 Empire Boulevard. And Mr. Costello, I would just ask if you have any additional items to add before we hear from the architect and the good doctor?
I do, thank you. As you remember, at the public hearing, there were a few items that the Board was concerned about and I noted for the applicants what was addressed as landscaping, which we will work out with the applicants. We'll have our consultant go through their landscaping and make sure that it's up to what it should be for the site. The big issue though, the one outstanding issue that they've been trying to work out with our fire marshal is the access issue. As you remember, fire marshal, I'd made a recommendation, he might like to see an access point coming from the north instead of the south. And Dan will probably talk about in a minute, is the big issue for him was making turning raises onto the property with his fire trucks and being able to negotiate the fire trucks to the site and then getting them back off the site. Dan has provided him with turning templates for the vehicles. He's familiar with the size of the vehicles that are necessary to fight fires, both for Wes Webster and Penfield. So he's provided Jeff with that information. Jeff is now in the process of working with the fire district to ensure that they're supportive of it. In addition to that, one of the recommendations that we came up with, the PRC this morning, and strictly as a recommendation that they're looking, they'll look into, but the possibility of actually having a second access point to the north, they have kind of a loop situation, might be a safer situation for them on a daily basis and certainly for fire safety and EMS people. That is really going to be up to the state DOT and them. If the state DOT says absolutely not, then that's not going to be an issue. So really, they're kind of at the mercy of the DOT with respect to whatever they do. Right now, they're looking to try and identify this is what their preferred alternative would be and that's going to be up to the fire district as to how they feel about that. If the fire district makes a recommendation that it's fine, the staff will be fine with it. If the recommendation comes in that they might like to see that turning radius come out to a loop road, we should at least have the DOT look at it and make a decision one way or the other on it. If they make in favor, I would recommend that we do it. If they say no, then it's not an issue. The other thing is they may need a T-turn around if they can't go all the way through back to Empire Boulevard to get the trucks to turn around. At least the smaller trucks to turn around in there and make movement. If there's more than one, it could be a problem to get them in and out of there if there's more than one that has to make a movement. So they are working with the fire marshal and the district to try and come up with an answer with that. Am I on target?
Yes. Well done.
Thank you.
I spoke with Jeff earlier today. The truck I show on there is their ladder truck or it's, they have a longer quint, but that's not that truck. That's a ladder truck. They likely would not fight this building as a fire with that apparatus. They would fight it with a pumper truck, which is a lot smaller than that. He just wanted me to show that truck to just prove that it could articulate in there and because it's the biggest one, so if that one works, the other ones work. His concern, I initially thought from the comment, was the grade issue because it currently does, it humps up grade when you come right off of Empire. It wasn't the grade issue. I told him, you know, we were going to be regrading as part of the plan. He didn't think, or he was concerned, he didn't say it could happen either way. I needed to prove it to him. He was concerned that the truck couldn't make the turn. And the way it's situated there from the south actually takes, there's more room to make the bend because of where the position is of the building. If I move the building any further down the hill, it's going to get too close to the grade that's off the backside or the hillside and it's not going to work. And if we put it on the other side, it's going to eat more space of the property up, which is somewhat against what the, you know, Ken wants to do because of the fact that the whole point of the property is to use what's there and the trees that are there. We don't want to take more down.
Sure.
The other thing is, as part of the submission to the DOT, they have an expedited review process that I talked a little bit about before, but an expedited review wouldn't work if it was a new curb cut. I mean, I like the recommendation, but I don't, I just know in the DOT, they're not going to want another curb cut. That's a 45 mile an hour road and they're going to say, "No way." They may be okay with it, but I would highly doubt it. Less is more to them. So the point to this was just to enhance that, make it better. And I think once the grade is there and the vegetation is cleared up, the line of sight is there, the sidewalk's in there now, which pushes everything back as well and helps clear things up, I think that's the application to go with in this setup.
Okay. Rob, I think you had a question.
I just had, was this raised by Wes Webster Fire?
No, Penfield.
Penfield Fire?
Penfield Fire Marshal.
Fire Marshal.
Oh, raised the question.
But, you know, if you take a look at it, it's the Penfield Fire Marshal. He's got three fire districts that he, you know, provides information and support to and from.
And maybe that's why he wanted the bigger truck. I guess I didn't even think of that. I do work currently--
So I guess the question I was going to ask is like, how much land do you have here to the north where some other kind of mitigating arrangement? I've been on the Board for eight years now and I don't recall a single application that we've reviewed where we've actually had diagrams of fire trucks coming into parking lots. So I'm trying to figure out what makes this unique. Well, I-- I'm asking, I guess I'm asking for Jim and what feedback you have from the fire marshal as far as why is this unique compared to any other application or--
Well, it's unique to this Board because you just haven't run into the situation. The planning board runs into the situation on a regular basis. This is a situation now because of the turning radius is what he's concerned about, getting his trucks into the site safely and then getting them out safely.
I recommended that I show him that, so he didn't ask for it. I just want to be clear, it wasn't like he asked for it. I said, "Look, I got--
It took the extra step to show--
I got your truck, I can show you that it works." And so I recommended doing that.
Yes, he copied in Jeff this morning and also copied me in as part of the email that he had sent on to show how this could work. So again, it comes down to the fact that I think Jeff is probably comfortable with that, but I think it's going to, you know, the district is going to look at it and make sure that, you know, Wes Webster's at least service this area. They're going to look at it and get some type of response back to you.
Okay.
My personal feeling is I don't think it's an issue where it would hold up the approval process. I think it's going to be a condition of approval that they have to resolve, whatever it is they have to resolve with both the district, the fire marshal, and the state DOT. I would still recommend, and he's right, it may not ever happen, but I would still recommend that we have a discussion with the state DOT about the possibility of two curb cuts. I think that would be a safer situation to get in and out for everybody involved.
Just to run up the flagpole and have them say no, but make sure--
Yeah, if they say no, it's--
--the diligence.
That's right. If they say no, it's a done issue, but I think the question should be asked.
Part of our dilemma there too, just to be forthright, if we do have the curb cut on the north side, we would want to flip the rotation of the building so that the door is closer to where you enter.
Yeah, and I don't think the fire marshal's asking for that. I don't think that, I think that he's either going to live with this or possibly the second access point. I don't think he's going to request you to go to the north as he usually did, so.
I'm comfortable certainly with the work that's been done and presented moving forward with this. I don't want to hold up the doctor anymore than, you know, is reasonable and I think that anything that can even be a condition of approval then moves this along quicker. We've certainly, we're certainly very familiar with this by now.
Right, and we had the public hearing last week and only received positive feedback on it.
Right.
I see every reason to go forward with it, with the condition of this access and the fire district's position.
Okay.
I would move that.
So, okay, before we get, I'll come right back to you. Dan had indicated he went through and covered the 33 items. I think there were three items that I identified. I think we've got most of them either addressed or resolved, but I just want to make sure we just touched on them. I think the one question came up about the five versus the seven-foot sidewalk and we worked through, we worked through that one?
Yeah, seven, I think we've discussed it. It makes sense, especially, you know, with some of the pickups too, if they back in, it's even going to chew up more aside. To be honest with you, that's pretty good practice.
Okay.
I just didn't see it in the code anywhere, but it makes a lot of sense.
Okay. The second item that I made note of was with regards to the landscape and the landscaping plan and--
Yeah, and I'll submit.
I think that you worked through that. And then the third item was with regards to the firefighting equipment and so it appears as though you've got a good solution or proposal for how that will be addressed. I think those are the three outstanding items that I had captured. Okay, great. That being the case, then I will recognize Councilwoman Cole for a motion.
Motion to approve.
A second?
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. I'll ask before I call for the vote, anything additional, Mr. Costello, that has not been added to the record that you believe should be added to the record?
No, just the process for them in terms of having a resolution of approval, prepare for the Board to review and then pass at the next meeting. Other than that, I think you're in pretty good shape and you can start the site office after that.
Okay. Then I'll ask the applicants, any additional input that you would like to provide the Board that you haven't already done so, either at the public hearing or this evening? Okay. Board, one last opportunity, other further discussion? Okay, there's a motion and a second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, great. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your time and the resolution will be in for the next legislative hearing. Okay, we'll move on to our second action item. It's a hold harness agreement request at 410 Maryview Drive. Mr. Valentine?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Passing around a few handouts. Mr. Isaac approached my office a week or so ago and he lives in the Village of East Hampton Development off of State Road. It is a private development in there, but as is our common practice, we own the sanitary sewers within that development. So they have their individual townhouse units on either side. In the original design, they had their driveway shown to stay outside of our sanitary sewer easement. So kind of the top plan in yellow shows Mr. Isaac's sketches where he's looking to expand the driveway. Underneath, I kind of highlighted in green where our easement is and then as well as, as well as kind of I simulated the bump out that he's showing over that. So he's looking for a four-foot expansion into the easement as well as a little turnaround area for him and his neighbor to back out. Obviously, the expansion of the pavement is an association issue. He'll need to deal with the HOA on expanding the pavement and whether that's allowed in their association. But obviously, putting something inside of one of our easements falls under jurisdiction of this Board, so.
So this is approved by the zoning board for the driveway?
The original thought was to go to the zoning board. The original thought was to go to the zoning board, it did not. It just was on the sketch and it was easier for me than recreating it, so originally thought it'd go to the zoning board, but there's not a variance request needed. It falls under the association. There's no setbacks, there's no issues on their end. It purely just falls under this board as far as allowing additional pavement over top of our sanitary sewer.
Okay.
And is there anything unusual about this and if it seems to be something we've done before?
Pretty straightforward.
Obviously, as though it is-
PRC had no concerns. Typically, we get a little more concern when it's a physical structure.
Sure.
You know, obviously, you're building a shed, a pool, something that's, you know, a physical thing in that area. Obviously, pavement is a surface pertinence, but you know, that's something we deal with everywhere. We have pavement over top of our pipes and, you know, it still gives us the ability to get in and flush demand holes and maintain our pipes as normal.
And if something occurs at that location where we have to go and open up the asphalt, he will be responsible for it.
And that's part of the whole harmless agreement is understand is if and when we ever had to, it's a new pipe, so it's probably not be any time in the future, but asking him as offense if we had to get in and dig it up. He doesn't either would understand that, you know, that'd be at their cost to, we would obviously repair it back to basic ground and then if they had to repave it, that'd be at their cost.
I don't have any issues with this. We've certainly done this before and to be consistent with our practice, I would move that we approve the request for the whole harmless agreement with the usual terms and conditions.
Seconded. Any further discussions or comments, staff or board?
So, just for Mr. Isaac's, whatever, if the board does move ahead with it, I need to prepare a resolution for the board and then they would vote on it next week. So, there's a little bit of time lag in that, just with the process and I can work with you on that.
And also, the actual document, the release, or the whole harmless will have to be recorded in the Rocaody Clerk's office, which we will have that filed at your cost.
File and everything else.
Okay, great. See, no further comments from board or staff, from the applicant. Any comments, questions for the board?
Well, Seth, thank you.
All right, great. Thank you, Mr. Isaac. Thank you very much. Moved and seconded. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, very good. A resolution will be in next Wednesday, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in.
All right, thank you for your time. Enjoy the nice weather.
Yep.
Okay, we will move on to our informational item. We have a petition. A couple of young ladies brought in and came in and actually addressed the town board. I see them here this evening. Thank you for coming. It looks like you guys are coming from some different events, maybe scouts, maybe some sports and some things like that, so welcome. You're welcome to join us at the table if you'd like. You can sit right there if you want to do that as well. That's your preference. You look good on TV, ladies, so.
I might need your input some more.
And we may have, that's right, the board may have some questions, so thank you, thank you for being here. So, as everyone recalls, these two young ladies brought in a petition and presented it to the board. We've asked staff to go through and prepare some information as it relates to the sidewalks in this area to take a look at the site. And Mr. Valentine, I'm going to recognize you for this handout that you've provided the board. The board also reached for the copy of it via email and so if you'd like to highlight that. And then I'd ask, Mr. Costello, if you wouldn't mind passing that down to the young ladies. I've got an advanced copy from Mr. Valentine, so give them that so that they can take that. You can take that with you. So, with that, Mr. Valentine, if you would, sir?
Yeah, obviously, given the petition that the girls submitted, we took a look at it and put a cost estimate together of what it would cause to install sidewalks at our current rate or what the rate we pay, prevailing wage rate. So, at our current cost, this is going to cost us roughly $158,000. Wanted to kind of share with the board back is, you know, as you go through your annual budgets and everything else setting stuff up, you know, what that looks like moving ahead. Typically, we do kind of our sidewalk discussion February, March of each year, but it was, you know, obviously timely that their petition came in now, so wanted to kind of share that with the board as we kind of look ahead. Obviously, that's not in our budget for one year. You know, we can depend on the board's thoughts. You know, we're always on a lookout for grant opportunities. Unfortunately, this one falls out of the CDVD zone, you know, but we're always on the lookout for safe routes to school money or, you know, other funding opportunities to do stuff like that. Subsequent to that also was the request to put the speed counters out on the road, so we did count the traffic out there as well. So, we had those out for two weeks. The speeds seem to be in keeping with where they've been. The speeds are 25 or less at the 85th percentile and we're seeing about 2,300 cars on an average daily basis, which is in keeping with what it's been in the last few years, so.
Can you repeat that again? You said it was 2,300 cars per day?
Yep.
And the speed count was registering 25 miles below or less? 25 miles or less?
Basically, we measured the 85th percentile is the industry standard, so 85% of the cars are going 25 miles or less where we counted them, which is the speed limit on the road.
And then those counters are, they're 24 hours, right?
Yep, so they're 24 hours a day. We did have them out for two weeks. There wasn't a state sale that was in there for part of the time, so we want to make sure whether that skewed our numbers one way or the other. They could have skewed our numbers higher for the count of cars and possibly lower for the speed, so we left it up a little bit longer for that. Just looking back at our history, we've kind of, Huntington Meadows back to 1999, we were at about 2,800 cars a day there, but that was prior to the speed humps, so we've seen that now that the humps have added, it's decreased some of the volume on the road. They've come down a little bit. 2002, they were 2,700, now we're about 2,300, so it's stayed fairly consistent over the number of years we've had it, but it was a little decline after the speed humps went in. People have obviously found alternate routes to take.
So, the sidewalk cost is just the one side of the road, right?
That is for one side of the road.
It's just for one, not-
That's from Clark Road to Panorama Trail. So, they identified in their petition, which was wonderful, you know, we always get people that want sidewalks and then the debate is which side of the road to put the sidewalks on. It makes my life and our life a lot easier if everybody can agree to have them on one side and then obviously, we'd have to still look at, you know, if we did decide to move ahead, survey of the road, how much right-of-way do we have, utilities that are in the way. So, some of our numbers kind of, we have a little bit of fluff in there just if there is utility relocations, you know, if we have to do any tree removals, you know, there's going to be other stuff in the way. And then obviously, if we have to go through and obtain easements and everything else. So, we tried to kind of have an all encompassing number of what that is, but without having done a, you know, full land survey of the property, it was just kind of more of a visual assessment of what's out there and then just obviously the street construction cost, the cost of concrete and labor cost.
So, to interpret the engineer speak for everybody, your, the chart here and the girls have before that has a proposed project or projected project, Huntington Meadows, Clark Road to Panorama Trail, which comes to 2,050 linear feet. Looking at the lowest cost we could, the company bid price, that's $38.50 per linear feet.
For a five-foot wide sidewalk?
Five-foot wide sidewalk on one side of the street and the cost to the town would be $157,850. Currently in the budget for 2019, the budget is $55,000. So, we're looking at an increase of 100,000 plus as far as how much the sidewalk. Do you girls think a sidewalk would cost that much?
Frank said. Comments, discussion? What I might throw out for the board to think about and consider is that as we're currently near the end of the 2019 budget cycle and by law, we cannot increase, we can lower the budget, but we cannot increase the budget by law after it's been initially proposed to the public. What I might suggest is that we ask staff to go through and do the survey in 2019 for the project. So, essentially, what that would do is identify the exact route, identify any trees that might have to be removed, any easements that might need to be obtained. I'm guessing that not all the sidewalks are going to be 100% in the right-of-way. There's going to probably be some easements and that we would identify that and then we would go through and then speak with the respective property owners and give them an opportunity to see where the sidewalk is, to see what the impact of any landscaping or tree loss might be, any easement that they would be asked for as part of that. And then what I might recommend is that the board look to put this in for the 2020 budget, so it would be the 2020 budget construction in 2020.
Is there is an opportunity for us to have money left over from 2019 from sidewalk that would carry over?
Historically, we have not, but-
Potential, yeah.
Is it possible to split between two fiscal years?
We certainly, we certainly could do that.
Do the work at once, but is it possible to do that?
We would, we would have to essentially, again, we would, what I would recommend to the board is, is that we do it in '20 because if you carry the money from '19 to '20, you'd be doing the work in '20 anyways.
Right.
So, if we, if we take some or all the money that is being proposed for '19 and encumber that in '20, then we'd be still looking to budget about $105,000, plus or minus.
No, that makes sense. We are at the end of the year, so.
I was looking at, I was looking at '20 and '21.
So, that's, that's an option as well.
Okay.
That is an option as well.
How long is it the survey would take? I mean, it's all homes and looking at utilities.
Oh, it's just a matter of a week once you're out there.
A week?
I mean, I don't have any budget left this year, so it's a 2019 budget item. If we do have a survey budget and everything else, you know, we would hire a surveyor out, you know, go out and map it, get the boundary and get everything else to identify, all that stuff. We could then, or wanted to move ahead on it, we could move ahead with our design plans next year, get everything else prepped and ready and then obviously, if budget's ready, then you could start 2020, you know, with installation sooner in the season than at the end of the season, get the permitting stuff out of the way if there's anything needed. Through that, one good thing, Huntington Meadow is a local road, so we're not having to deal with the state or the county DOT, which takes a lot of the timeframe.
Yeah, both sides is too, the Butts Town roads.
Yep.
Caught a break.
Yeah. It's rare.
You still have to deal with water authority and you still have to deal with Argenee and, you know, other agencies, so there's still some coordination to be done, but at least you're safe dealing with those two other highway agencies.
They were tying into both local roads at either end as well, so that helps a lot.
Your girls have done a lot of work and important work for easements that he mentioned. Easements are when the town has to go on your property. And so, what we would have to do is if there's any time we're going on your property, it's outside of what we have a right-of-way already for, which is usually closest to the street, then that property owner has to sign and say, "Yes, you can come and build the sidewalk." So, by having a petition that had people all on one side saying, "We're in favor of that," now it makes it a lot easier for the town to get an easement. That's been, I think, historically been a real issue and a problem and why some sidewalks have not been put in is that we can't get 100% of the property owners to say, "Yes, you can build the sidewalk through my yard or through my driveway." So, that's a huge help to us for you to be, for you to go ahead and do that.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I think that the petition that was brought forward, I commend you both for doing that. It takes a lot of effort to do that and, I mean, sidewalks sometimes can be one of the most contentious issues in a neighborhood. You know, and we've seen it before this body, before the town where, you know, people seem to be agreed that they want a sidewalk, but put it on your side of the street, not on my side of the street, and then it just starts spiraling downhill from there. The supervisor and I, I was it nine years ago? It was eight or nine years ago, we held a meeting down at Huntington Brook with the residents on Huntington Meadow and Huntington Brook to talk about some traffic issues there and one of those issues was sidewalks. And I'll tell you, it was a very contentious discussion between neighbors where I think Tony, the supervisor, ended up having to be the referee and just end the conversation because there was significant disagreement on whether or not sidewalks should be on Huntington Meadow amongst the neighbors themselves and the residents on that street. And so, to come forward, you know, with the petition that you put forth with a, you know, unanimous amount of residents that are supportive, I think is really telling of the efforts that you did, but also that the residents, and I know there's been a lot of turnover on that street over the last, you know, eight-plus years, you know, it just shows that there seems to be some unification there and that's a good thing. And certainly, a petition is a really good step forward in doing that, so.
Yeah, there've been several streets where residents have come to me and said, "Why don't we have sidewalks yet?" And I say, "Well, I don't want to point to your neighbors, but there's a few who said no and, you know, that kind of kills the deal." So, but I would imagine that having the two of them go to door-to-door versus the two of you at a meeting, I'm not, you know-
You're pointing to him.
Connect the dots.
We may have to hire those two and negotiate our petition. And, you know, and quite honestly, in full disclosure, I mean, I do commend your efforts. I mean, I lived on Huntington Meadow. I lived there for almost 22 years and my parents lived there, I think, almost 35, 40 years. And so, I understand the traffic on that street. I understand that neighborhood, you know, to some extent, so I certainly think that, you know, us moving forward with looking at putting sidewalks on Huntington Meadow is the right thing to do. Yeah, you know, I do wish that this petition came forward a couple months ago before the '19 budget was already put into place, that I think that would have helped move things along a little bit more. But, you know, it is what it is and I think that we can start doing some things with the town to get it set and get it ready to go and take a look at funding mechanisms as was discussed with grants and whether state or federal grants and really put a good effort into trying to make this a reality. And I think this board, you know, would be committed to do that, so.
We will reach out, we'll reach out to our state representatives and ask them, you know, if they might be willing to provide some support for this that might help as well. We'll ask Mr. Valentine, if the board's in agreement, to move forward right after the new year with having the survey work done, starting to develop the map and then from there identify, again, trees, landscaping that might be impacted, easements that might need to be obtained. And then one of the things that we may elect to do is hold a public information meeting with the neighbors and do that so that all of the neighbors have the opportunity to come in, see the plan, ask questions. We can have the board there, we can have staff there and answer any questions that might come up to do that. And then as we're budgeting for the 2020 budget, we can look to put, beef up that sidewalk line from what it is, from what it is today to do that. So, if the board is comfortable with that, we'll move in that direction and maybe in the, in the spring of 2019, we can hold a public information meeting and give everybody a chance to take a look at the plans and where the sidewalk might fall in relationship to their home.
Yeah, and Tony, if we can, you know, look at some state grants or federal grants and, you know, have the opportunity to secure those and expedite this, I certainly would encourage this board and the staff to pursue those opportunities also.
We will do that. I know that Mark mentioned the safe route to schools. That's one that's been very popular, so we'll look at that and any others that might be out there.
Do you need a motion for that?
I think we should have a motion for that, so.
All you said was purpose for a motion. I moved that.
Okay. By Linda's second?
I will second.
Second by poll up for us to move forward with a plan of design layout '19, construction in 2020. All right, so at this time, what I'd like to do is I'd like to ask the young ladies that brought the petition forward, do you have any questions for the board or do you have any comments or anything like that at this time that you'd like to share with us?
I don't have any.
Okay, all right.
Well, let you know, I've said it to Funky, your Assemblyman Johns needs some extra encouragement. We'll call upon you.
That's right. We'll put the full court press, we'll put the full court press on those guys and see if we can get some monies. But again, you've, we've heard it a couple of times and I can't stress it enough how important the work that you did and the time that you spent. It really does mean a lot and it does make a difference. And so, thank you to both of you. important the work that you did and the time that you spent. It really does mean a lot and it does make a difference and so, thank you to both of you. And you probably had some help behind the scenes with some parents encouraging you and supporting you and some neighbors helping as well, so, you know, thank you for everything that you've done and all the support that you got for this project.
Yeah, great job.
All right.
Really good job.
All right, good luck in school and we'll keep you posted. I think Mr. Valentine has email addresses and as we get things together, we will send it out to your parents so they have that. All right. Thanks, ladies. Good luck in school. Thank you. All right, that brings us to the end of our agenda. There being no further business to come before the town board, that the October 10, 2018 work session stands adjourned at 7:58 PM. Thank you.